Councilmember Oro, handshake. Well, we have quite an attendance this evening. That's great. A lot of things to accomplish for the betterment of the community. At this point, meeting is called to order for the American Canyon Regular City Council Meeting of October 3, 2023. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miriam Abadamas.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pierre Washington is excused. Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here. Thank you all.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, I would just note for the record that consistent with AB 2449, Councilmember Oro is participating remotely.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to report on closed session confirmation reportable action. Anything to report?
No, Mr. Mayor, no additional items to report.
Thank you very much. We'll move on this evening to proclamations and presentations. Wow, this is a great evening. Proclamation Philippine American Heritage History Month. Bravo, yeah. Put that there like that. Okay. October 23 is Philippine American Heritage Month. Proclamation. Whereas in 2009, the United States Congress recognized October as Filipino-American Heritage Month in the United States. And whereas Filipino-Americans are the second-largest Asian group in the nation and the third-largest ethnic group in California. And whereas the celebration of Filipino-American History Month in October commemorates the first recorded presence of Filipinos in the continental United States, which occurred on October 18, 1587, when Los Anes Indios came ashore from the Spanish galleon Nuestra Señora de Esperanza and landed on what's now Moro Bay, California. And whereas through the development of these three institutions, Filipino-American Studies, FAS, Filipino-American National Historical Society, FAHNS, and Filipino-American History Month, FAHM, we recognize how Filipino-Americans have initiated collectively grassroots efforts to ensure that their voices are heard, that their experiences are recognized, and their stories, their history, are told. Whereas we acknowledge these major historical markers in our community, and we encourage Filipino-Americans and their allies across the country to collectively celebrate Filipino-American Heritage Month 2023 with these legacies in mind. And whereas we recognize the many ways that Filipino-Americans have made significant economic contributions and have other profound positive influences on our community through their strong commitment to family, faith, education, hard work, culture, and service. And whereas in acknowledging the many legacies created by Filipino-Americans across the United States and in American Canyon, we encourage our community members to be enriched by the cultural contributions of our Filipino-American friends and neighbors and for many decades to come. Now therefore it being resolved, did I, Mayor Leon Garcia, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Filipino Heritage Month in the City of American Canyon? Those who wish to comment, please come to the podium. We have a number of proclamations to hand out.
I think it's appropriate to go ahead and invite
Yes.
the members of the Filipino-American community groups present here up to the podium.
Please come up. I think we have Phil Am, Holy Family Church, Masons. Any other groups?
I suppose to keep this very short and concise because it is a proclamation.
Well, I'm looking at the crowd. We're going to need a wide-angle lens to capture everybody.
Why don't you just very quickly feel comfortable just up to the mic and say which group you are representing?
That's correct. Thank you.
My name is Clarence Mamral. I'm with the Filipino Life and Generations Group, which is a Filipino-American Culture and Wellness Student Group out of American Canyon.
Alright, thank you.
Hello, everybody. Anthony Kicho, Phil Am of American Canyon, one of the founders. Go away.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor, before you guys go on.
Mr. Mayor, David's trying to say something.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Elmar Manati. I am a past president of the Association of American Canyon and currently a board director.
Can we hold on a second?
No, we'll take care of that as soon as everybody introduces themselves. Okay?
Good evening, everyone. Rob Missispenney, master of American Canyon Lodge Number 875, three accepted Masons of the State of California. And we are proud to be witness to the tonight's celebration.
Thank you all. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. This is so exciting when my husband Leon Garcia said invite the Filipino. And here we are. We are not only member of the community, but also in the leadership of the community. I am the first Filipino president of Solano Association of Realtors.
Well, thank you all for the introductions. As you see, Councilmember Oro has his hand up for comment.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad we, this is turning into
Excuse me, Councilmember. We need to boost the volume somehow.
How about this? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's still not very loud.
I think it's the volume on your end. My microphone is working.
Try it again.
Let's see here. Hold on.
That's better. Yes.
That better? That's the microphone on your end. It should be working. My microphone works. So can you hear me okay now?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, this is turning into a Filipino party where everybody just shows up. I wanted to recognize a group that I invited up as well, and I wanted them to receive the proclamation this year because it was the first time that they would be part of it and receiving it, and they've made an impact in our community. And in the audience is the family of Cooked by Gio. I'm hoping that they could step up and say a few words.
Good evening, welcome.
Hey, how's it going, everyone? All right. My name is Gio. I'm the owner and the founder of Cooked by Gio, or CBG for short. We are a food business based out of American Canyon, and we specialize in authentic Filipino cuisine and street food. We are here today in celebration of Filipino-American History Month, a month dedicated to the events, the experiences, and the lives of our people and their impact on society today. I came across a quote that goes like this. "A society grows great when their people plant trees in whose shade they shall not sit." As Filipino-Americans, we recognize the hard work and perseverance of our people that paved the way for each and every one of us. And with that, we would like to show our appreciation by continuing what they have started. We are not only a group of people with a passion for cooking. We have a purpose as well. Our mission is to make Filipino cuisine a household name, to bring Filipino food to the forefront here in America. We are grateful and very honored to be chosen to represent the proclamation for this year's Filipino-American History Month. Today, we are reminded of our journey, our people's rich history, and the exciting new chapters ahead. On behalf of my team, Crisaldo, Philip, Mike, my wife Carla, we thank you for all the support you've shown us over the past few years. Thank you very much.
No worries. Thank you. Ready for proclamation?
We'd like to take some photos if you guys are willing to do that.
If I could ask the group representatives that gave us their name and the group that they're with, if you would please meet Jen Kanzenbach. She's right in the back there. She's coming towards the door. We need to write down your names and organizations. Thank you.
Just go take a picture now. Hey, how's it going? Could I see a representative from each group? Have your attention, please. Where's our hush button? I have additional proclamations for, excuse me, in the back. A representative for each one of the groups.
Would you like me to give them to Jen so she can hand them out when she's getting the names?
Good. That'll work. Mr. Hall is going to hand out the proclamation. We'll start with a representative of each group. And additional ones can be printed if you so desire. Just let the city staff know. All right. So, the question is, so where's the barbecue, the lechon? I see the lumpia queen in the audience. Yeah, great thing to celebrate, you know. So many of you I see on almost a weekly basis at least. All right, we get that done? We ready to move on? Next item is National Code Compliance Appreciation Month. Mr. Cooper, are you receiving?
Sorry, Mayor, just having too much fun.
Yeah. Oh, we've got our code enforcement officer. Well, good. Welcome. Good evening. Good to have both of you here. Thank you. Okay. Proclamation, October 2023 is National Code and Compliance Appreciation Month. Whereas code enforcement officers provide health, safety, and welfare to communities throughout the state of California by educating when necessary, enforcing local, state, and federal laws. And whereas code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding roles and often do not receive recognition for their work to maintain and improve resident quality of life and business economic vitality. And whereas code enforcement requires extensive knowledge of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental, health, and life safety. And whereas code enforcement officers possess expertise and training in code enforcement certification, California law enforcement, telecommunications system certification, mediation, and conflict resolution. And whereas code enforcement officers coordinate with the building officials, law enforcement, and fire safety personnel. And whereas code enforcement officers have a highly visible role in the communities they serve and respect individuals' lifestyle choices when explaining neighborhood preservation rules and regulations. And whereas code enforcement officers often work nights and weekends, sometimes under dangerous conditions, to keep American Canyon residents and businesses safe from hazards. And whereas the American Association of Code Enforcement recognizes, honors code enforcement officers and professionals to bring awareness to the importance of code enforcement to the communities of the United States. Now therefore it be resolved that the city council of the City of American Canyon hereby recognizes and expresses its appreciation for the dedication and service of our code enforcement officers. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate the proclamation for National Code Enforcement Appreciation Month. The proclamation really does say it all. There is a lot of skills as well as a very, very strong personal strength to be able to do the job that Tiffany does on a daily basis. And we really appreciate the work that she does. Is this the time?
I just wanted to say some words quickly. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for taking the time to acknowledge the work that code enforcement officers do to help resolve issues and keep cities safe. I would like to thank all the American Canyon staff from PD, Public Works, Environmental Services, Finance, and our city attorney Bill Ross and his staff, who routinely collaborate with me and answer my many questions. I'd especially like to thank my supervisor Brent Cooper and my community development coworkers who've been so supportive and invested in helping me do my job. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good job. We're going to get a picture now. Well, thank you, Tiffany, for the work you're doing for the betterment of the community and ensuring their safety. Okay, we'll move on to appointment of youth commissioners. There's another exciting part on tonight's agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If we could have all three of our youth commissioners come up here to the podium, please. This item, Mayor, is a little bit of a new item for us. Staff is recommending that we appoint these fine students to our three different advisory commissions that we have. The Planning Commission, the Open Space Advisory, Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commission, our Parks and Community Services Commission. We had six applicants. These are all seniors at the American Canyon High School. And staff went through their applications and found that these students would be the best fit for these particular commissions. So staff's recommending that the council appoint them.
Well, we go forward there. I think what we'll do, I'm suggesting maybe we can come up here in front. Get a photo op while you guys are being
We need to do an oath of office first, Mayor, if that's feasible to the council.
Okay.
There is actually a minute order, Mayor. So we actually would request a motion and a second, and we'll adopt a minute order to memorialize the council's action.
Very good. Motion in that effect, council? Yes, so moved.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Abadamas.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council.
Perfect. And now we'll do our three oaths of office with our deputy city clerk, and then we can do photo op. Thank you. Come on up, Cherry, please. Oh, I guess Trish is going to do.
I'm going to do them from here, but Cherry's just there to help you guys, so I'm not sure which one of you is which, so I'm just going to call a name, okay? We'll do Allison Bensick. Thank you. Okay, Allison, if you could raise your right hand, please, and you're going to repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Allison Bensick.
Youth Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commissioner.
Youth Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commissioner.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution to the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Elena Ray Guido. Great, thank you. If you'd please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Elena Ray Guido.
Youth Parks and Community Services Commissioner.
Youth Parks and Community Services Commissioner.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Congratulations. DeAndre Lindsey. Raise your right hand, please. I, state your name.
I, DeAndre Lindsey.
Youth Planning Commissioner.
Youth Planning Commissioner.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties of which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
We'd like to do a photo with our youth commissioners. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the front, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. That's going to be a great experience for our youth. And I really am proud of the fact that we provide that opportunity in American Canyon. It's going to be a great learning experience. And we're glad you're stepping forward to be part of that. Okay. We'll move on now to public comment items, not on closed session or an open session agenda. Anybody want to comment publicly? We have three minutes. Anything not on the agenda, please? Oh, thank you. Thank you. Good to have that. See you all later. Go out and celebrate. Great day to celebrate. We'll see you all. Thanks for being here. Save me some lechon. I've got the lumpia already covered.
Hi.
Didn't see you there. How are you?
Good. It's so quiet.
Well, you've got her for my sister. We wore one of those shirts for their ceremony.
All right. All right.
Was it something I said?
Thank you for the resource guide.
Oh, you're welcome. So, my name is Ann Payne, I am here tonight as a member of the Advisory Council for the Napa Solano Area Agency on Aging. I'm gonna be annoying and come here every couple of months just to remind you guys that the Area Agency on Aging is here. For those of you that don't know, the agency is funded through the Older Americans Act and through the California Department of Aging. The mission is to advocate and, for and enhance quality of life, health, and independence and dignity of older adults in Napa and Solano County. Our priorities, our funding priorities are nutrition, transportation, and access to services for older adults and their caregivers. Support emphasizes helping older adults age in place for as long as possible and that's, I think, the goal for all of us is to be able to stay as independent and as well for as long as we possibly can. So, we do this through funded and non-funded programs and partners and the Advisory Council, of which I am a member. Some of the services that are in Napa County include, under the umbrella of Calabria Care, Providence now, right?
Providence.
Providence, yeah. Alzheimer's Resources for people that have a diagnosis of Alzheimer's or some other form of dementia and their caregivers and family members. Information and referral, so there's a number that you can call and they can connect you to whatever resources it is that you need. Caregiver support, and that includes grandparents raising grandchildren. Hi-CAP, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Hi-CAP, it's a Medicare counseling program and the volunteers that work with Hi-CAP are trained to help those of us that are Medicare eligible navigate through the maze that is Medicare and find out what plan is best for them. The Ombudsman Program, which sends representatives into assisted living and skilled nursing facilities to make sure that the residents are being well taken care of and that their needs are being met in a safe manner. Molly's Angels, which provides transportation to people in all of Napa County and they're looking for volunteers. LGBTQ Support, there's a program at
Voices?
Voices in Napa that has a support group for LGBTQ seniors. Right now, it's virtual. And Nutrition Services, which is meals on wheels and home-delivered meals. American Canyon currently doesn't have a congregate site at the senior center, we're hoping to get that back up and running. And as part of the Advisory Council, one of the things that we're really advocating for is better food. Cause we went to a couple sites and, yeah, we need better food. And the most important thing that I'm here for tonight is to let you all know that I'm recruiting for Advisory Council members. I know Mr. Mayor was instrumental in getting me on the board and I'm really glad that I am, cause
Thank you.
Seniors are my heart.
Thank you, you're at time.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Counsel?
Thank you.
Won't you finish what your presentation is, please? Just go ahead and finish.
Oh, I just wanted, you know.
Well, it's three minutes, but your counsel's gonna make that determination, so.
Thank you. I just wanna let you know that we're here and if anybody would like a copy of the resource guide, Melissa very kindly brought some for me. And the phone number for help is 1-800-510-2020. Thank you.
We can make sure we have copies out available at the Active Adult Center as well. I think that'd be a good point to focus for it. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to comment? Please come forward, sir.
Oh, I got three minutes to say about fifteen minutes worth of things, so let's do this. My name's Chris Sweet, I'm here on behalf of American Canyon Little League. Nikki as well, president of the league, I'm vice president of softball.
Welcome, good to have you here.
We are, we live at that field, her family lives at that field all the time. We're a nonprofit organization and what we're looking for is some, some help, funding. We were working with grants and trying to get some extra funding to do some modifications to our fields, upgrades, I would say. It's a history organization, it's been there for fifty years. It's been here longer than the city of American Canyon's been here. West Vallejo, American Canyon Little League for a long time. Fran knows about us. Our neighbor. But no, it is, it's a big, it's a big deal to us. I'm one of three, she's one of three daughters of mine, being the oldest at nine. It's a very important thing, organized sports, and it's brought so much confidence to her life, so much friendship that she wouldn't have otherwise because of that. Our, our goal is to get more awareness of softball. My, my goal is, sorry, is to get more awareness of softball, girl's sports, you know. They, I go to her school and I see there's just as many boys as there is girls, I don't understand why we don't have as many softball. I think bringing some light to that and doing some upgrades to our fields to get more people out there. Not only that, just some of the things that need to be changed because of safety concerns, I would say. But we are working diligently, the two of us, to get as much funding as we can outside of you guys. We know that you guys do a lot for us, sponsorships by some of you councilmen, some of you guys throw first pitches out for us, you know, the support's always there and I love that. But this, this needs to come in the form of money unfortunately for us to be able to get what we want. And it's, it's not gonna be, you know, just handed to us, we've got a lot of sweat equity to put into this and are willing to do so. Little League is, is, I think, a vital part of this city, very vital part.
And the development of the kids?
Yeah.
It's really important for us as a league, as, as a community, that we work really hard to help develop these kids and bring them like responsibility and teach them discipline and teach them a lot of different things. And there's a lot of kids that come in and out, there's a lot of you who are parents who have kids that come in and out, and we're working to make upgrades to those fields inside and out to bring people, more people in as we're continuing to grow and give those kids a safe place to play. And we've seen a steady decline in just how the fields look and the blacktop, there's so many people that continue to get hurt. The playplace that we have out there, I mean, kids can't even play on it. It's like, we just try to prevent them from moving, playing on there. So, we're really looking just to help and like, we're working with T-Mobile to get a fifty thousand dollar grant. We're also working with additional sponsors and we're also working with MLB to get some other grants as well and also bring in people to do sweat equity to just redo those fields, level them out, bring in tournaments to be able to bring more money to the city. We lost out on hundreds of thousands of dollars for the city this year because our fields were not up to par. To host a state tournament that brings in everybody from California and like Napa does. And so, we're losing out on those opportunities that Napa gets, that American Canyon can get, to stay at our hotels, eat at our restaurants, and do a lot of different things that can really help the city as well as the kids.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think I've seen, I was there for, it was opening day for the fiftieth anniversary and gentleman sitting next to me was one of the first board members of that. Had pictures of the field before it was built and you can see the trees around your house, Fran. So, it's been a longstanding history here in American Canyon. We now have adults who are coaches and involved with the teams who play Little League here.
That played in our league when it was, are now on board.
Yeah. Anybody else for a public comment?
Yes.
Okay, I'll get these.
Yeah, I wanted to.
All right.
Hey, I'd like to say that those guys that work out all the time and move and they're always up there upgrading the field and doing marvelous things for the children. So, I'd like to see, so I'd like to see our parks and rickets help take care of that park. It is a park and it was belonged to the city. So, even that and I'd like to also see maybe they can take some donations, I'd be happy to donate.
Very good.
They're wonderful. I, I can't say enough, all the years they've been there, they've been so proactive and it's just wonderful for the children. Thank you.
Thank you Fran. Councilmember Abadamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you guys for coming and for your courage to the little ones at the podium. Jason, we gave direction a few meetings ago to host a needs meeting kind of for our community Little Leagues and soccer field to find out, to do an assessment of our parks and figure out what was needed by all of the different children, extracurricular entities. Did that meeting happen and do we have some sort of update? Cause to be honest with you, I've been hearing comments such as this since I've been elected and it's starting to get a little bit frustrating that we haven't fixed something at the Little League fields.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback, Councilmember Abadamas. Yes, we did have meetings primarily with our users of Compart Two, both the Wolves and, and Little League talking really about Compart Two. We haven't had a focused meeting at the Little League complex. We do, it is a city facility and we already have an existing agreement with Little League where we provide capital contributions in the form of money to the group, but we're in contact with them and eager to figure out what else we can do.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second that. You know, if, if you can work with our staff to see what we have, either what's already existing and available or if we need a supplemental to, to come back and see what we can do. Cause it would be nice to resolve or at least identify where we want to go with the, with the fields. And now that we own Napa Junction next door, I think the city's in even better position to work with the Little League and kind of figure out what we can do to help.
And at this point, frankly, I feel like our agreement is not working because if it was working, then we wouldn't be getting consistent public comments saying that the field is deteriorating. What I heard right now is that it's dangerous and people are constantly getting injured. That scares me from liability perspective and the fact that these are children we're talking about. So, maybe it's time to renegotiate that agreement or figure out what's working in it and what's not. I know, I'm sorry, I can see the look on your face, but I'm just getting really frustrated with the fact that it's still a very abysmal field.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk with the offline and explain the parameters of the existing agreement and compare it to what other jurisdictions do with their particular agreements and certainly take a look at this one.
Councilmember Oro, does it stand up?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I was just gonna let this public comment ride, but since other council members are in there, so.
Thank you, if you get a little closer to your mic, please.
Mic seems to work, is this any better?
No, I think it's on this end.
It is on your end, for sure. I tell you, this mic works for everybody else. I'll wait until you adjust it and let me know if it sounds okay.
Well, yeah, keep talking and we'll hear your voice, hope we got it right.
My voice is now talking, so let me know if you can hear me okay.
Go ahead, please.
We good?
Okay.
Are we okay now?
I think it's better. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I'll get really close to this microphone here if that helps out in any way. So, so, I wasn't gonna say anything around this just because let it, public comment, but we did get a letter from Ms. Pacheco earlier today asking for that support and I have been in touch with other board members about possible support as well. I do believe that T-Mobile has a, a, a matching grant that we could possibly do and I would encourage the city manager and city staff to bring that back to council and so we can consider it. I would like to note that, you know, two of my three kids have played at that field, I've coached at that field for years. The one kid who did not play actually tripped on the asphalt and scraped her knees. And that was years ago and I'm pretty sure not much has been done yet. What hasn't been beyond just the needs for improvement, what people fail to recognize is the historical nature of that Little League facility. If you have not been up to the boardroom and up, on the upstairs floor, there are photos there dating back from the fifties, I believe, of all the Little League teams that are there. It is an actual treasure for us and we should do something to improve it. And the other thing too, and I think we held off because we actually didn't know what we were gonna do with that whole site. I think now that the city and the council has a little bit, little bit more clarity of what's going on in that area, we should move quickly to make a decision and help support that Little League as much as we can. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I, I do just wanna say that I have gone through due diligence and have thought of everything and what it will cost to get those things set up with the like sweat equity put into it, so to cut some of those costs to make it cross-court and happy to share that with you guys of what it is. Like, we can do all the fields and everything with all the grants that we're asking for. The only thing that is the most expensive is the asphalt.
Okay.
And I think it's, that's one of the bigger things that does need to get done, but the leveling of the fields is really important. If the kids are running out there, it's all the siblings that get hurt on the blacktops.
No, I think from what we're hearing clearly it needs some attention, so I think a meeting with the city staff and the league and a conversation about what needs to get done, how we pay for it. Very good, all right. Anybody else for a public comment? If not, a closed public comment, we'll move on.
Mayor, no, I don't think we have anything else. The microphone for the podium, is that what, have you turned that back on?
Oh, turned it off. Feedback, sorry.
There you go. Thank you. No, I don't have any other.
Okay. Move on then to item number eight, public hearings, ordinance increasing the monthly salary of city council members. You know, we don't have all council members able to participate this evening.
Mayor Garcia, pardon me, we're at agenda changes.
You're right.
Thank you.
Any agenda changes, council?
No.
Take a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second, roll call please.
Councilmember Abadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, as I was saying, the, regarding the salary increase for council members, I think it should be a discussion with all of us present, however, maybe some, something framing the outline of what we're gonna, what we need to be looking at. Mr. Hawley? I think like today, the, what's the compensation package look like today?
I'm prepared to address that.
City Attorney's Office has prepared this item, item number ten, Mayor, so.
All right, well, very good.
Thank you Mayor.
Senator, please proceed.
So, recently, the governor signed into law AB 329, it was sponsored by Senator Dodd and allows cities such as American Canyon to increase the salary of its council members. For cities below thirty-five thousand residents, such as American Canyon, SB 329 authorizes a monthly salary of up to nine hundred and fifty dollars per council member. Prior to AB 329 and since nineteen eighty-four, city councils across California were capped at three hundred dollars per month, subject to an annual five percent inflationary adjustment. In the thirty-nine years since nineteen eighty-four, American Canyon City Council has only utilized that five percent annual inflationary adjustment one time. That was in two thousand and four. So, since two thousand and four, American Canyon's council members have received three hundred and fifteen dollars a month in monthly compensation. The goals for AB 329, as stated by Senator Dodd, include offsetting the inflation that has occurred since nineteen eighty-four, promoting diversity in candidates for office, and encouraging individuals from underprivileged communities to run for office despite perhaps needing to take time off of, from their career or day jobs or family obligations in order to serve in office. AB 329 becomes effective on January one, twenty twenty-four. If the council considers the ordinance and, and approves said ordinance, it will become on the, effective that same date, January one, twenty twenty-four. Notably, however, while AB 329 amends the existing laws pertaining to the amount of monthly compensation for which city councils may receive, it does not impact the existing laws regarding the timing of when those adjustments would become effective. Under existing law, even where council members serve staggered terms, any increase will only take effect when there is an election involving at least one council member, upon which it would take effect to apply to all council members. Therefore, any special, absent any special election scenario, if the council were to adopt this ordinance, it will come back for a second reading and then become fully effective only after the November twenty twenty-four election, so over, over a year from now. Stated differently, SB 329 is structured in such a way that the council is not considering an immediate pay increase, but rather a future, an increase for the future council's composition following the November twenty twenty-four elections. Other jurisdictions are reviewing this. I've been informed that the city of St. Helada recently approved an adjustment for I've been informed that the city of St. Helena recently approved an adjustment from $300 to $950 for their council members. Lastly, existing law does authorize any council member in their individual discretion to waive that monthly salary of whatever it may be. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions from council?
The only thing I would add, mayor, is that this was an item that was specifically requested by the city council a few council meetings ago, and so we're bringing this item back because of that request.
Thank you for following up on that. Well, council, I would suggest that we do have the information with us, but I feel it's important that we have all council members able to participate in the discussion. So we got the background on it, and it can be repeated at the next time we take it up if you accept my idea. And we have comment from Councilmember O'Ro.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm remote today, and I'll just tell the public that I've tested positive for COVID, and so that's why I'm staying, calling in remotely. Um, I, 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 I don't mind doing that. I came for this because I'm comfortable with the aspects. I did talk to one council member about this, and that was absent, excused member, Councilmember Washington. Um, and I'd like, I'd like to have a discussion, to have this vote, to have this, have this now. I don't think, at least what I felt from him, he does not need to be present.
Okay. Thank you. I'd feel better. Thank you for that comment. I just, with respect to Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Washington, I'd like to hear him state his position, so that's my feeling on the matter.
Did he provide, I mean, the staff report was published last week. Did he provide any feedback to you, Mr. Hawley? Did he request that we hold on to this until he's here?
No, he, he, he was comfortable with the council taking whatever action the council wanted to take. He did not express to me, you know, a desire. His, his being excused was an unexpected absence, and it was, it was work-related but fairly impromptu, and so he needed to be gone today. He's on an airplane, he probably has landed by now, but he didn't have much choice in that matter, so, but he, he was comfortable with whatever the council, for him, you know, this wasn't requested by him. For him, it wasn't, I think he felt comfortable with whatever council direction. He didn't feel the need to be here, but he didn't express to me his perspective on how he might vote if he was here or any sort of the merits of it. It was more, he felt comfortable after we, because we've had this item on the agenda forecast for a while, so this item has been scheduled for tonight for several meetings now. And his, his needing to be gone was, like I said, fairly impromptu within probably Wednesday or Thursday of last week. And in talking with him, he already knew it was going to be here Tuesday. He knew he'd be missing this meeting, and he didn't express, you know, something akin to, gosh, I certainly can't be there, this is an important item to me, I'd like to push this off till I can be there. For him, he knew it was on the schedule, and he felt comfortable with whatever this council decision was.
Do you have anything affirming that he was okay with council going forward with it?
He felt comfortable with whatever direction the four of you would go with it. For him, he would support whatever the four of you went. It wasn't a burning issue for him one way or another, and so, like I said, he was comfortable, what he expressed to me was, he's comfortable with whatever you all wanted to do and would support that.
That was part of a conversation the two of you had?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
As he was informing me that he wasn't going to be here Tuesday, this was part of that same conversation, you know, city manager, Hawley, I now have to be absent kind of unexpectedly, sort of chagrined a little bit that he was going to have to miss a meeting for a work obligation, and knowing that this, in particular, this item was going to be here, he felt, that's fine if the council wants to take whatever action. I'm comfortable with whatever action the council wants to take. He would support it whether it was yes or whether it was no, or, you know, if it was continued.
Well, that helps me with my perspective on it, then. See, who is the, yeah, House Member Joseph?
Yeah, it's confusing because I'm sitting in Councilmember O'Ro's seat, so.
I can see your light.
Um, when I, when I thought that maybe Vice Mayor Washington and Councilmember O'Ro might both be missing the meeting, I was getting a little uncomfortable about three of us making a decision, but Councilmember O'Ro's here, you know, so now it's, it's a little more like a council granted, Vice Mayor Washington can't be here, and that's unfortunate, but technically, he'll get a chance to vote on it at the next meeting because it's an ordinance and it takes two swipes. So I'm more comfortable going ahead and discussing it and taking action tonight than, than I was earlier today, for what it's worth. And then in that regard, I am persuaded by the fact that there hasn't been an adjustment in our case since 2004. And so I think inflation and everything has justified an increase, and I am persuaded by the argument that this might make it a little more economically appealing to a lot of people in this community that are certainly motivated and dedicated but just can't afford the time commitment to be on the council when it means they're probably going to lose money. So if, if this has the effect of encouraging more people to apply and run, then I think it's well worth the investment, and for that, I'm certainly sympathetic to moving forward with this.
Very good. Any other comment? So this is a public hearing. Council ready for a public comment?
I think Councilmember O'Ro's got his hand up.
Oh, he does, yes. Councilmember O'Ro, thank you.
Yeah, you know, I'll let it go to public comment and reserve for later.
All right. Public comment is open on this matter.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and honorable council members. My name is Kenneth Leary. I'm a resident of American Canyon, and I would like to speak in favor of increasing the compensation for city council members. Being a former city council member, I know the commitment and the work and all the events that you attend. It can be a financial burden, so I am speaking in favor of the increase and was hoping that you would make it retroactive.
Yeah, there's probably some sharing of sentiment around that. Any other public comment? Anybody else to address the council on this matter? Do we have anybody online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay. Well, then with that being said, I will close public comment. We'll return to council for further discussion, desired action. I appreciate the confirmation, the conversation that you and Vice Mayor Washington had, Mr. Hawley, thanks for sharing that with us. That helps me with my perspective on it. Council, oh, Councilmember O'Ro.
Yeah, I just need to say a couple of things here. Thank you, mayor. Hopefully you guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So first of all, nobody's going to get rich off of this salary. That needs to be understood. Second, this isn't really about us on this council giving ourselves a raise. This is about potential new council members considering this. We won't enjoy this unless you're reelected in 2024 and beyond. Nobody, we're not scratching anybody's back here, and especially not ours. What it is doing, I think, is the intent of the bill is actually to make it a little bit more equitable. When I joined this council outside of Councilmember Abadamas, everybody on the council was above the age of 60 and was a retired person of the state of California, when the demographics of the city was, the average age was about 38, and working folks. I get to do this because I have flexibility within my business that I run to attend and make time, not just for council meetings, but during daytime. It's very difficult to do this if you have a full-time job. But I would love to see people consider this as an incentive, the salary here of basically $950 a month, to possibly consider running. There should be a stay-at-home mom here that can actually afford to have a babysitter now because of this salary and attend these things. There should be a part-time worker in the city who could consider this, considering the salary. If we want a diverse representation of this, this salary should be implemented immediately, at least until the next cycle. We just can't have the same demographic rep on council, and it really needs to be more diverse. And it really isn't that much pay, but it is meaningful for a lot of people. I'm totally in favor of it, and I hope my council members vote when we make the motion to be in favor of it as well.
Councilmember Abadamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember O'Ro, you took the words right out of my mouth. I'm supportive of this for the same reasons that Councilmember O'Ro stated. We do have a very diverse council in terms of ethnicity, but it's very difficult to have a full-time job and a family, AKA the average individual in American Canyon, and still be on the city council. I don't think that $960 a month is going to convince anyone to quit their day job, and Senator Dodd's intention in adding this or writing this bill was to, you know, get people to take some time off of work to be able to participate in city council activities. Although I appreciate the intent, like I said, I think it's just the first step in the right direction. I've talked about this frequently. If we want a diverse, a more diverse council, then we need to incentivize people to actually want to run, and it's not just campaigning takes many, many, many hours. For me, campaigning, especially my first go-around, was a full-time job. I would literally start my day at 7:00 AM, and it would go till 9 o'clock at night, depending on if I had a forum or not, non-stop. You can't do that with a full-time job, and I believe it discourages a lot of people. If we want to represent our community adequately, I think we do need to have a more diverse council in terms of age, working, not working. Councilmember O'Ro works, has a lot more flexible work schedule than I do, like he mentioned. It has been so difficult over the last seven years to have a job where I report to somebody, have a billable hour requirement, and still be effective on the city council. But I grew up here. It was worth it for me, and it's still worth it for me. I love this town, and I love feeling like I'm part of making a difference in this town. So I'm inclined to support this as well, and like Councilmember O'Ro said, this likely will not benefit us. Unless, you know, everybody wants to run for reelection and actually wins, that's another story, but we do have term limits now, so if it does benefit us, it won't be for very long. And that's all my comments for right now.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments thus far with this matter. I know I afforded flexibility to my work time. I was working full-time, and I could off-shift as long as I worked my full eight hours, which I did. I think the thing that I'd like to add to this conversation is the cost of expenses have gone up since 2004. I mean, you know, I've got to travel to places like San Rafael for a meeting, or Petaluma for a meeting, or sometimes we have meetings up in St. Helena, Calistoga, Abag, drive down the city, take BART. Gasoline was not $6 a gallon back then. It's very close to that right now. It hasn't reached it by this hour of the night. So I think there's a piece of that to be considered in the picture as well. So I'd like to contribute that to the conversation as well. Dedication to work we do, we have our committee assignments, there's also that part of advocacy for our city or networking to things of value that we can do to improve what we contribute to our community from the city. So that's an important aspect I'd like to raise with it. I needed to close public comment. Public hearing is closed. Anyway, we're back to a discussion with council. If council is ready for this, we could take care of a motion on it.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I'd be happy to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2023, next in order, an ordinance of the city council, I mean, an ordinance of the city of American Canyon to increase the monthly salary of the members of the city council.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Ro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're move on to.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on?
Yes.
I would just like to excuse myself because of this. I'd like to go take some rest because of this COVID-19. It may not seem like it because I had energy going into this with the Phil-Am, but it's better if I skip the rest of this meeting.
Well, thank you for staying with us till we got this matter done, Councilmember O'Ro. Appreciate it.
Take care of yourself.
Take care of you well.
Thank you.
Get plenty of rest. We can move on now to city property review. Mr. Cooper?
All right. Thank you, mayor. Councilmembers and members of the home, I'm Brent Cooper, Community Development Director, and I'm following up on a city council request for information from just last August. It feels like yesterday, but it's already two months away. So back in, way back in August, the city council requested that staff obtain a list of all the properties that the city owns and then conduct a preliminary evaluation which ones might potentially be able to accommodate condominiums that could be developed and sold to lower-income residents. So we obtained that list from our finance department, and there are approximately 100 parcels. And parcels are different than road rights-of-way. Rights-of-way, which is a big chunk of property the city owns, actually isn't technically in a parcel. It has a little different category. These are, are, in many cases, they're creeks, they may be landscape lots next to roads, of course, our parks, the property that this building sits on, and other such things that's put to use to provide services to residents and infrastructure and all the like. And so combing through that, most of the parcels that the city owns is really dedicated to some form of public service today. And so that kind of narrowed it down to about six parcels that are, could potentially support housing, either they're developed with housing today or they're vacant, and they have residential zoning. And so looking at this map here, we have about five sites. One of the, one of the sites consists of two parcels. Up in the north there, we have three, and then there's two in the, in the southern part. Kind of what's similar about the parcels is all of them, except the one on High Ridge, is they're all flat and regular-shaped, which is good for development. The property at the end of Teresa Avenue, not far from City Hall here, a block away, it's located within an earthquake fault investigation zone. So before any development could happen there, there would need to be a geologic investigation of the property to see if there's an earthquake fault on it. But that's only one, one of the five sites. Taking a closer look at each of them, just briefly here, 189 Teresa Avenue is way up there, just like I said, about a block away from here in City Hall. That property just had the house cleared on it, and it's being used for staging now for construction. The other parcel is next to City Hall, the empty lot here. 11 Teresa Avenue is just down the street here, the intersection of Eucalyptus and Teresa. Kimberly Park Expansion in the southwest corner of the city has two parcels, and then there's a parcel on High Ridge Drive that the city owns. And I have photographs of each of these from Google Earth. They're a little dated, but they have a nice sort of 3D bird's-eye view. So this is the one on Teresa Avenue. It still shows the house there. Of course, it's been cleared. That one's half an acre, so this is also the one that has, requires an earthquake investigation. The parcel next to City Hall here is just under .8 acres. The photo here showing the parking on the left-hand side, that's part of this parcel. Parking there is, of course, used for City Hall. On the right-hand side, you can kind of see a little green strip there and sort of a dirt area to the left of it. The green area there actually is within Caltrans right-of-way. So the parcel line kind of coincides with the boundary between the little sort of green area on the right-hand side and that sort of gray sandy side. 11 Teresa Avenue, of course, is the corner of Teresa and Eucalyptus. This property was purchased by the city because Eucalyptus Drive itself isn't built to its ultimate right-of-way, and so someday the widening for this road to its planned with would take property from this house. Also, parallel to that, there- Also, parallel to that, there is a River to Ridge Trail that we're really looking forward to happening someday, to take us from the wetlands there all the way over to new, open space. And this is along that path. So that would further take property from this house. So by the city owning it, we're not going to be taking somebody's personal home that they own. It's a, it's a kind of a better way to do it. The Kimberly Park Expansion, this is one where there has been a plan for, for years that's unfunded. This is 12 acres. That's certainly a decent size. It looks like there's already some improvements there. But that's a kind of large, flat area. And then this is an interesting one, High Ridge Drive. This is a parcel. I don't know what the reason is for the city to own it. Haven't done any investigation on kind of how it came to be owned by the city. But anyway, it is a, it is a parcel that the city owns between two very, very nice houses. And that's kind of the rundown of the parcels that we have, that the city owns that potentially might support housing.
I think the, thank you for the presentation. I think the Kimberly Park Expansion, this local residence would certainly prefer a park with that. So it's well-named. And I think it looks like there's some improvements already been started on it in one section there. Okay, comments? Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, I second the appreciation for the, for the presentation and the report. And I would agree, Kimberly Park might not be a good, it's a perfect site if you were looking at, I want to build some houses, a 12-acre relatively flat spot meets the bill. But I'm reminded of Matt Stewart a few years back, who kept arguing that he was promised to park there. And although technically he wasn't, it is certainly a designated park site. So I think that probably has, will be a better ultimate use there. There was one other parcel, though, and I mentioned to the city manager. It's, there's a vacant lot on Spike Rush that connects the back end of Com Park 1. And I do believe that's a separate parcel, and I'm pretty sure the city owns it or should own it. I think we actually provided a credit of impact fees of some sort to secure it. So that could also be a parcel that really, but for that transaction, would have been a house now. So that might be an opportunity for maybe a duplex.
Is that the, is that back to the creek?
That's what you'd think. There's a parcel that is the creek, but then there's another parcel that is actually, there's that little sidewalk area, and to the left of the sidewalk is a vacant lot.
There's a curb cut already cleared there.
Yeah. That is actually, I believe it should be the city-owned parcel. So there's an opportunity there. There's also the opportunity to take advantage of our Affordable Housing Fund and simply buy land that's for sale that might also be converted again. And I emphasize, the whole purpose of my bringing this up is to identify opportunities for affordable housing, not just the idea that we want to find a spot to put houses. If that were the case, we would have recommended rezoning the two parcels that the school district owns two weeks ago. This is really intended to identify opportunities for 100% affordable housing, particularly condominiums, which might not be economically viable in a one or two parcel kind of thing. But they might be opportunities where we can work with the housing authority or work with someone to create an affordable housing, even if it's a duplex or a single home, or, or we can do a lot split or something. So I appreciate the report. My, my objective is to identify maybe that Spike Rush parcel and look at it as well. And really to explore whether or not it makes some sense for us to consider buying parcels that are for sale and then use them to create some affordable housing opportunities.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Cooper, for your presentation. Similarly to Kimberly Park, where Mr. Mayor said that I think our residents would prefer a park there than housing. If I remember correctly, we also purchased Teresa strategically for traffic mitigation, potential traffic mitigation measures. And I definitely think that our residents would prefer traffic mitigation measures over an affordable housing unit there as well. So just something to keep in mind. And that's it. I love the idea of a duplex, though.
All right. Anything further? Council ready for public comment? Any public comment on this matter? Go ahead, Fran.
Personally, I don't think the city is in the, I don't think the city should be buying property. Sorry. I've felt that way all the years this has been a city. I think by the city buying it, they're using my money to buy property to develop. And it's kind of like, why not let a developer come in? I just feel like the city's not, to me, the city isn't the business of buying property. So that's just my opinion.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Melissa Lamatina, passionate resident of American Canyon. Just want to remind everyone that we have the Silver Tsunami hitting us. And if anyone doesn't know what that means, we have a bunch of baby boomers that are impacting our, our world. And we're not ready for that. So I, I think we need to buy property and make it for older people. I'm a social worker with the County of Napa in Home Supportive Services. And I literally have 80-year-olds living in their cars because they can't afford somewhere to live. So I think we really need to keep this in mind and look at our older folks that will need services in every capacity, and it's already happening, and we're already struggling. We can't even find care providers for our older folks. So if we can kind of keep that in mind for the future, that would be great. And not like assisted living, like homes for our folks. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmember Kenneth Leary, LAFCO Public Member. I want to speak about, first about city property 4391 Broadway, APN 058083-018, three-quarters of an acre. This park is located right behind us. I believe it should be a park. Having a public spot, park where a public can gather at a city facility in case of celebration or protest is an important part of our democracy. And I think that parcel should be taken off the list, and it should become a park. Public space, whether it's a gazebo or someplace, maybe a big soapbox so I can go and stand and shout. But I think that should remain a park. Next, I'd like to speak to housing and property. And if you look at the veterans' housing that was built, and most of the housing currently built in American Canyon and cities have been a collaboration, partnership with the city and nonprofits. Currently, private investors are not building basically affordable houses. They're building houses that they can get the best market rate for. And you know, and I know that when we're in discussion with them about affordable housing or housing credits, it's a battle. We do have a housing problem in American Canyon, California, and the nation. And when, when the government got out of housing and left it in the hands of private developers, this is what it resulted to. So I think it behooves the city to participate any way it can in providing, you know, land, working with others to be able to build affordable housing or below-market-rate housing. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wishing to comment? Do we have anyone online?
We do not.
All right. Thank you very much. So this is an information item. Appreciate it. I would say that in terms of affordable housing or low-income housing, the city's doing an incredible job with what we're doing with places like The Cove, Lamos Point, other projects around the city. I think the last time I saw in the lower-income quadrant of housing, we're at about 156%, if I remember the number correctly, in terms of what we're building, versus what we require. Is there other comments here? Councilmember Joseph?
Yes. Well, first of all, in all due respects to Fran, I generally, there's a lot of merit to the city not getting into the private sector business. But the reality is, when it comes to affordable housing, if we leave it to developers to buy up land for housing, they aren't going to do anything affordable other than the bare minimum. And like it or not, that's just the way the market works. And my intent, you know, if, if my intent was, hey, the city owns some land, let's put some houses, make a few hundred grand, and, and call ourselves good. If that was my intent, then yeah, that would be the wrong public policy. But here, we're looking at opportunities to create more affordable housing opportunities. And I would agree that some of these ought to be off the list. The Kimberly parcel probably should stay as a park. The parcel there at the corner, you know, either should be a park, or it might be ideally suited for some type of commercial development. But for regardless, keep it off the list as well. So that really kind of gets you into a few small parcels. The, what we're seeing on the screen, 11 Teresa Avenue, I think that ought to be on hold partly because there's somebody living in the house right now, and partly because we don't know what will be left over when we do that River to Ridge Trail. There is vacant land behind it. There may be an opportunity to, to acquire additional land and do something because we'll own both pieces theoretically. The 189 Teresa, next door to us, I think is worth exploring, but, but the opportunity for a fault line to kind of mess up the, the game plan is there. The High Ridge parcel is pretty small, so I'm not sure what you can do with that. You know, I mean, the terrain and everything, that just, I think that was a remnant parcel when the development came in. And it's probably a good reason for a remnant because you can't do anything effectively on it. I would like to explore the Spike Rush parcel that's not on the list. And maybe we just explore it as a duplex that can be built similar to the style that's there, and that we work with the housing authority or any of the various nonprofits that do this. And certainly explore that as an opportunity for a duplex. Those could be two affordable units. Not only will that help us meet our requirements, but probably exceed them as we have in the past. And like I said, the other objective would be to use some of the Affordable Housing impact funds that have been paid for by developers, not by us taxpayers, and look at that in, in terms of identifying parcels that may be for sale that we could acquire, and then rather than have them at market rate, work again with someone to have them developed as affordable opportunities. So that's, that's my pitch.
Mr. Hawley?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick little update on that last, that last point about the Affordable Housing Fund itself. We have about a quarter of a million, about $277,000 in fund balance right now. We are expecting some revenues, most notably from the Oath Hill project that would increase that if and when, hopefully, they're pulling building permits sometime soon. But at the moment, there's about $277,000. So just to kind of temper expectations of what would be available to, to buy. Thank you.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple points that I wanted to agree with or elaborate on. I, I do agree that the City of American Canyon is doing a great job with affordable housing. But we, the state of California, Napa County, American Canyon is still in a housing crisis, and we do need to continue. So I do agree with, with our policy decision there. But I wanted to add to something Ms. Lamatina said. You were talking about the Silver Tsunami. I don't know if you're aware, but there's also an increase in silver divorce. And so what happens when people get divorced at an older age typically, oftentimes, I shouldn't say typically, oftentimes, people own a house together, and it's paid off by the time, you know, they're silver. And then they get a divorce, and then what happens? How do you buy another house? How do you qualify for another house on fixed income? And so housing becomes an issue in that, in that sense as well. So I'm not sure if you know about that. I'm writing a blog on it if you'd like to talk later. But, and $277,000 unfortunately, isn't very much when it comes to purchasing land or building affordable housing. So maybe we sell some of these properties that we're not doing anything with and add that money to our Affordable Housing Fund. And then once an opportunity arises, we contribute it to something, maybe like what we did with Valley View in Saha. If I remember correctly, didn't we kind of share costs there?
I think we took advantage of a parcel that was on the market during the housing crisis.
Well, I think the, certainly, land uses is within the control of the city, so as we have with the development. People have come forward with their proposal. As I understand it also, it's a matter of scale. If you're building two houses, the fixed costs are still there. And you multiply that into a larger project, it makes that more economically viable. So something like a Cove, for example, which is, what, 120-some-odd units? That helps make that construction cost and the affordability of it in terms of the minimum rent before the occupier. Okay. Anything further on this?
No, Mayor.
Appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have now the item 10, Management and Staff Oral Reports, Park and Recreation Department Update. Exciting things happening over there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Alexandra Ikata, your Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here this evening to provide our update about what's been going on within the Parks and Recreation Department. This update this evening is going to include from January 2023 through September 2023. The last time I was here, that report was from March 2022 to December 2022. So we're trying to get full-year increment snapshots. So this evening, we're going to go over a couple items. Program registration, parks and facility rentals, community volunteer opportunities, community nonprofit organizations and our partners, community sports organizations, projects, and then looking forward. So Parks and Recreation, we do it all. We are committed to enhancing our community's quality of life. We play a significant role in shaping the city's character and sense of place. We strive to meet the needs of a diverse and multi-generational community by offering a wide variety of recreation programs, services, parks, trails, and open spaces. And we continue to be an essential function of the city by promoting physical, emotional, and mental health by encouraging physical fitness, outdoor play. We foster social cohesiveness by creating diversity and promoting social equity. We create memorial experience, memorable experiences through our community events and partnerships. We sustain and steward natural resources by protecting sensitive habitats and species within our open spaces. And we support economic vitality by partnering, supporting with our local partners and nonprofit organizations. This really says it all. I know it's really hard to read, and I tried to fit everything in there, but I wanted to show you the growth over the last year from 2022 to, I don't know why that's happening. From 2022 to where we are today. As you recall, we migrated our registration software from ActiveNet to CivicRec, and we've actually increased our users. We have now over 8,500 households in our CivicRec registration. Of those 8,500, we have 4,600 of them that are American Canyon residents. We have, our CivicRec is very intuitive and easy to use. Majority of our registration actually occurs online. You can actually do pretty much one-stop shop, facility rentals, program registration, sign up for volunteer opportunities, all online. We also offer in-person services where we actually have staff that speak multiple languages. And we have a staff person that speaks Spanish and Tagalog, as well as English. So if they need assistance, either in-person or over the phone with translation, we actually have those services.
We have one staff member that speaks Tagalog, and then we have another
We have one staff member that speaks Tagalog, and then we have another staff person who speaks Spanish. No, I wish I, they are very talented, but with individual employees. But as you can see, the growth in our programming over time, and this is not even a full year, and we haven't, we haven't even completed a full year. Parks and Facility Rentals. Whether you're planning a birthday party, family reunion, or corporate event, or any other special gathering, our well-maintained parks and facilities continue to be a popular amenity amongst our community. We offer several park group picnic gathering locations that are exclusively on, to American Canyon residents for rentals. However, you don't have to rent them to, to use them. They are available from sunrise to sunset on a first-come, first-served basis. The rental opportunities for those individuals that are planning family gatherings and they want to make sure that they have a space to secure. As you recall, we, as you recall, we acquired the former Napa Junction Elementary School site in September two thousand and twenty-two. Since then, we have transformed that site with the help of our amazing Public Works and Parks and Facility Maintenance Crew and our Parks and Recreation Teams. This past summer, we were to hold our special, our summer camps and many other programs, and it's now a rentable space, as well as the Adult Activity Center and our recreation facility. Community Partnerships and Volunteers. We recognize the importance of our volunteers and how they help make our community a better place to live, work, and play. This past year to date, we've worked alongside one hundred and eighty-six volunteers, which is equating to eight hundred and thirty-seven volunteer hours. Many of those events include Earth Day, Ridge Trail Day, Coastal Cleanup Day, Goat Head Removal along our trails, and many other opportunities. Our goal is to provide at least one volunteer opportunity a month, and that's really to help with the high school's requirement that they have with their volunteer for their height, for their seniors. And so we do see a lot of young adults that participate in our volunteer opportunities and really engaging with, with, with the community and giving back in some shape or form. Our nonprofits and community partners are extremely important to the city. They soft, they foster civic engagement, leadership, and provide educational, recreation, and cultural and social services that are needed and valued by our community. Our department works with twenty-one different nonprofit organizations here in American Canyon, where we either support them in city staff time, or with supplies, or providing a space to them for them to be able to hold a community event. As you can see, just based off of the facilities and park rentals, where we are today of how many community events or community-sponsored opportunities we've provided a facility at no cost for them to be able to host either a program or a class or an event, as well as the staff hours that are directly supported to those events in some shape or form. Sports organizations play a significant role within our department and community. Although we provide a wide variety of high-quality sports programs, we work closely with several community sports organizations that provide an advanced competitive sport experience. The city values these partnerships as we promote high-quality sports leagues within our community, teach sportsmanship, sportsmanship, teamwork, and they help form meaningful relationships and community bonds. There are three particular groups that we, that we work with very closely. We actually hold meetings with them. We meet with them. We talk about their rental hours and their needs, maintenance challenges that they, that they want to discuss. And that, those groups include American Canyon Youth Football League, the American Canyon Youth Soccer Organization, and the American Canyon Little League. Most of these organizations are predominantly at either Kimberly Park or Community Park One, and then the Little League fields. But as you can see, the hours of their needs have increased over time, and we definitely work with them very closely, and we meet with them, and we have a great relationship with them. Projects. This is a really exciting time. We have really done, we have a lot going on. The Parks and Recreation Department works very closely with our Public Works Department, and like I mentioned, also our Park Maintenance Team. And we've had some great accomplishments that I would really like to celebrate today. We are in the third phase of the playground replacement project. We have successfully upgraded North Hampton Park to be our all-access universal play experience, and we had a ribbon cutting back in August. And then we recently finished Via Velagio Park, which is our bug park. If you have not seen it, it's really adorable and very cute. And then we are going to be starting the last phase of this project, which is going to be Linwood Park, which is expected to start on October sixteenth. In addition, we have our Skate Park relocation project. I'm sure you have driven by Veterans Park. We had some friends out there last week that were preparing the site for the project to break ground. They cleaned up very well in the areas that we need them to, and they're continuing to chump away. But that's in preparation for us to be able to start this, start this project. We had our site walkthrough today. They're going to be assembling the fences for the project, and we're hoping to actually physically break, break ground this week. Oops, not done yet. There's more. Forgot. There's a lot more. In addition, we are still trying to work out the details for the Wetlands Edge Enhancement Project. This is the project that's down at the Wetlands. It's going to include the permanent restroom, and then the three shades canopy that would potentially be able to house up to forty people to, for education purposes, program purposes, if they want any purpose that they would see fit for that area. In addition, this coming November, as part of the Citizens Academy, we are going to be doing a capstone project, and that's going to include installing a native pollinator garden down at the Wetlands and tie that all in. So that way, you not only have the restroom and the shade canopy, but now you actually have a native pollinator garden that people can go and learn about native marine-type plants at the Wetlands. Melvin Tennis Courts. We are currently soliciting quotes to get those resurfaced. I know I've received a lot of feedback regarding those, those courts, and we are hearing that feedback, and we're trying to find a company to be able to come out and resurface them. The North Hampton Shade Canopy, North Hampton Park Restroom, and Silver Oak Restroom, we're working with Public Works right now to find, to figure out those details. They are a little bit more complicated because you have to figure out utilities and the power lines and everything else that are out there. And then the Community Park One Improvements, which is the turf improvements. We just recently met with our Parks Maintenance Team and Public Works to talk about what that looks like and what that, what, what that project entails. So we're hopefully going to try to start that project this fiscal year. Via Velagio Playground Surface, that is coming to council on the seventeenth for a, a word of construction contract to Miracle Play Systems. That is to replace the current bark that's out there with the, the Pour-in-Place surface. And then last but not least, we are expected to replace the adult activity floors coming this December during the holiday Looking forward. So twenty twenty-three was a big year for us. We worked really closely with our Human Resources Department, and we were able to onboard thirty additional part-time, non-benefited staff to support our programs. That was a big overhaul. We started that in November. We are slated to do that again in preparation for summer twenty twenty-four. Luckily, we have a great return rate of our staff. A lot of the one, a lot of our employees who worked for us this summer are planning on coming back. So it's just, hopefully, it's not so much of recruitment, trying to get new people, but trying to onboard our returning staff, which is great because that tells that we have a great, a great relationship with our employees. Upcoming events. So we have several volunteer opportunities. We have Ridge Trail Day that's coming up on November fourth. That's a big day that we go up into Newell, and we try to secure the trail in preparation for the rains. In addition, we're going to be partnering with RCD, and we're going to be doing some vegetation management and trying to do, cut back the blackberry bush and remove that from the creek area. And then we also have our Veterans Day Ceremony. We, we don't, we don't solicit a lot of volunteers, but we do ask for volunteerism for that event to do tableing and other things to help support that, that ceremony. And then upcoming community events, we have our Pool Pumpkin Patch and Splash. That's on October twenty-first. That's where you get to swim with pumpkins and decorate them. It's a lot of fun. And then Veterans Day Ceremony is on November eleventh, and then we have our Magic of the Season, which is going to be on Friday this year in partnership with the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce and, and some local community members, where they're going to be doing some performances. And that's going to be from five to eight with the tree lighting at six-thirty. And then we have our Donuts with Santa on December Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for the presentations. See, a lot of activities are happening. I'm just impressed with the numbers going up in most areas, some of it rather significantly. Maybe we were kind of really entering the post-COVID era with life getting back to some sense of normal. But a lot of fun activities to do, too. So that, that's a draw for people. Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Thanks so much for everything you're doing and for your presentations. For the Via Velagio Park, you said it's Pour-in-Place? Was that the Melvin's Court?
Correct. Yes. Yes.
Thought my microphone was off.
Thought it was on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes. Thank you for the report. Going back to the football, soccer, and Little League screen, there seems to be, Little League in particular, there's a lot of staff hours. I'm, I'm assuming that's a lot of park maintenance hours, or what exactly, I mean, that's like the equivalent of two plus full-time people. So that's a lot of commitment.
That's actually their rental hours. It's not staff hours. So we, there's actually minimal staff when it comes to Little League. As we were talking about earlier, we, there is, we, we do have a contract with the Little League. It's been an ongoing contract, and part of that contract is where they have exclusive use of the Little League fields during their season. And then in addition, they use four other fields outside of that for games and practices. So that's all of their rental hours. They are, most sports nowadays are no longer seasonal. They're transitioning to being year-round. So they're now doing fall ball, spring ball, and then rec ball. Same with soccer. That's why you see a huge increase in soccer. It's not, it's no longer seasonal. They're, they're expanding their programs, which means they need more time. And so when they rent our fields, we don't charge them for that time. We just account it because that is time that's taken away in other shapes or form from the community, and it, it's used for their programming, but it's taken offline for, for public use.
Okay. So I, I misunderstood. I was thinking that was staff hours. Okay, good. Well, that's good, too. Financially, it's a little bit of an issue, but anything that gets used is a good thing. So the more use we get out of our facilities, the better.
Since this topic came up a little bit earlier, I wanted to kind of highlight, I think this slide does a great job of, of showing it. Most jurisdictions in the North Bay have a rate sheet, just like we do, for a fee schedule. And when organizations want to have exclusive use of a public facility, there's an hourly rate that's charged. We don't charge these groups for these hourly rates. So if you look at our fee schedule, you would be able to figure out the value of this facility use, and you'd be able to multiply the rate of the facility times these hours, and that would be the dollar amount of the value of that exclusive use. We're one of the very few, if not only jurisdictions in the, in the North Bay that allows our community groups this free exclusive access. So I wanted to make that point because it was, it came up earlier, and it's not always understood by the community that we provide that service. And I think it's important, especially when you see the hours here and all that.
Very good. Well, I could attest to North Hampton, the new facility. Well, there's a lot more kids out there. The little ones are just having a great blast out there. And you know, it's, see, sometimes it's family because they got a younger group there that plays basketball. So looking forward to some shade structure going up there, too. That's summertime. It's really needed, but we, we will get there. So far, it doesn't even stop people from coming over. But I can hear the screams and the joyful sounds from my house. So it's cool. Thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All right. Any public comment on this part?
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. Kenneth Leary, former Community Services Director. I, I have superlatives for the Parks and Rec and the job that's going on. I am registered online to be able to sign up for classes and things, and it is fantastic. I take yoga at the Adult Center, and it's, it's wonderful. Teachers are great, and classes are great. I look forward to the day that Napa Junction becomes developed, and there can be a dedicated room for dance, yoga, and such, using a multipurpose room for dance and yoga and things. We have to get down on the floor. It just doesn't feel really sanitary. So a dedicated room for dance, ballet, yoga, all those kinds of things, and one of the portables there, a classroom, would be fantastic. You don't have to break it down to bring in other things. You know, there could be a dedicated art room. So that's just a suggestion. I want to talk about the jewel of the West South Side, and that is North Hampton Park, Community Gardens, Elliott Park, and the Adult Center. There's a trail that connects all of them. It's fantastic. I, I love going that way instead of going down American Canyon Road to the Wetlands on my fifteen-mile jaunt around the city. I tripped the other day, so I got to watch that when you're getting older. It's a fantastic jewel. There are two basketball courts, one pickleball court, the Adult Center, two playgrounds, one that's handicap accessible, yeah, and, and, and open space. And so I, I think this is an area that can be enhanced. There is that gravel part that's on the other side of Community Gardens that people just drive up into. That would be nice if we had to use that for some other purpose. And so I, I just think it's, it's fantastic. I spoke to the mayor and to Mark about the crossing situations there. On Elliott and Chaucer, where you cross, the trail crosses those streets. Is that my time up?
Let's hear it one more time.
Okay. The, there are cuts, you know, in the sidewalk, so you come out. So you, you come out, if you're on a bike, you're just going to go right across the street and then jog and go up the other cut. There are crosswalks down on the corner. However, that, people aren't going to go down that way. I mean, they're going to walk right across the street. I think for safety purposes, they crosswalk at those places on Chaucer, and Elliott would be appropriate. At the Senior Center, there is a crosswalk across the trail. And so I, I think a safety issue there, or either some other signage that has people go around would be appropriate. However, it would be for bicycles, that's Mayor and I, we, we rode that trail. All right. So I think that's an important, something to look at and consider. And Parks and Rec is doing a great job. If you haven't taken the yoga class, I would say you sign up for it. Yeah. Mayor, I keep promising the ladies in there, you'll be there. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
I actually think we need a name for that trail. I don't know that, that, that trail has an actual, maybe Mark, you remember if that trail has an actual name or not?
It doesn't really have a name. I mean,
It connects a number of, it connects a number, I mean,
It, it's,
Mr.?
Yeah, it could be the Ken Leary Trail. It's part of the Napa Meadows subdivision. It could be the Napa Meadows Trail.
I was just sort of thinking of some signage and some branding, because it's a trail that connects about four,
Yeah.
Four kind of important little facilities in there, and absolutely the, the crosswalk issue. I've noticed that before, actually, on Chaucer.
Yeah, I was going to say, I forgot to mention to you, we need to do something, a crosswalk on Elliott at least.
I'm very, I'm very familiar with that. I do that walk almost every day, and it's that kind of that jog between the, where the curb cuts are. But now it's, you got to look both ways and sometimes go real fast, listen for cars, because you can't see them always. Yeah. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I see more, good things coming down the road. Thank you. Appreciate the energy and the focus.
Thank you.
Okay. It was an informational item. Thank you. Now we're on to Mayor Council comments, committee reports, and we'll take up future agenda items. Councilmember Joseph, anything further to add to your report?
Nothing other than to remind everybody, this Saturday, Wetlands Edge is from ten to two, is the pumpkin path. And not only can you paint a pumpkin, but you can buy one with four H selling them, and you can have coffee thanks to Parks Foundation. And there'll be an information booth from B C D C on sea level rise and not the, and just to find out about it and what's being planned and proposed. So be there or be square. So be there or be square.
All right. Councilmember Abadamas?
Um, other than, other than attending the California League of Cities last week for three days, I don't have much to report, but along with the Pumpkin Path on Saturday, once you're done decorating your pumpkin, head over to the fire station for the fire open house. It's also, it's from 10:00 to 1:00, I believe, so the times overlap.
You'll have to paint fast and, and keep moving.
Or go to the fire station first and then go take your time painting.
Fire station, the first part of it is more of a quiet hour, and then it gets packed with kids, because it gets nozier, and there's probably a riot on the, on the engine with that.
Can I add something? Because I forgot something that's been on my mind for a little bit about the trails, if you don't mind.
Counsel, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, Sunday, I did like 15 miles around the city. And the trail that is off American Canyon Road between Silver Oak and the Flavston Newell, there's a trail marker there right on the corner, and it says 5.75. And if you walk up there, then it's, it says there's six, and then 6.25, and then 7.5. And you go around the corner, right, and it's 7.5. And after that, it's like, okay, where does it start? Where does it end? So right there, it's like, oh, I'm thinking six miles. Okay, I'm at six miles, where? But it starts at 5.75. I like to see trail markers that connect around the city. From American Canyon Road to the Wetlands, it's about a mile and a quarter, a mile and a half walking, and it would be nice to have these, you know, mileposts, because people who walk and run like to do that and keep track. You know, you can do it on your iPhone or your watch, but it is nice having those things around. And I don't know how much they cost, but I think we could do a fundraiser thing if we need the money to do it. I'll chip some money in. Mark, I know, will chip some money in. So that's just an idea, because I, I keep trying to figure, where does this start? If it's 5.7, where's the, where's the five? Where's the four?
Thank you, thank you for the comment.
All right, thank you.
Sounds like an Eagle Scout project.
Just a point of clarification, Mayor and Council, that's part of the Vine Trail. And so those, that miles, five miles, is from the Ferry Plaza Building where Myrtle Zero is, and you're heading north to Calistoga.
All right, very good.
So, but admittedly, there might be some better identification of what that mile marker is and some additional markings.
Yeah, you could mark that appropriately. Right? Okay, well. Go ahead.
There's a park that, the, it's on the American Canyon Road, and it's closed. It's, it has a gate across there that goes along. There's a trail there, goes from the high school to the park. Is that open?
Along the side of the creek, on the north side.
There is a gate around some of the detention basins, but the trail itself is open. It's just, the very first part of the trail, there's a fence and a gate. We keep people out of the basins there.
Has anybody ever used that far?
Canada, he was just using it. He was just talking about using it.
Canada's.
Yeah, yes, people.
Yeah, it's, it's back there. It's accessible from some of the cul-de-sacs on the north side of it.
For what it's, for what it's worth, the Key Club tend to have their end-of-the-year party at the little, in the back, behind the, the backstop along that trail. That's about the only time I go up there.
All right, so in my report, yes, I'd like to congratulate again Councilmember Abadamas for her election to President of the North Bay Division League of California Cities. Bravo. It was a good conference. Keynote speakers were, a lot of folks seem to be dealing with how to communicate and the anger that's out there so much right now. I remember I caught piece of one of them dealing basically with angry people and threats. And there's a council member, I forget the city, it's in Southern California. But there's a bit strong oppositional group in town, and they have posted her address, picture of her house, names of her kids on a webpage, on their information. I'm glad we don't have that here. I'm also very concerned that there's extremist points of view out there that seem to be taking an edge, which is more threatening than communicating. So that was good. I think the, a lot of it, we're trying to come at different approaches of how to engage people in a way that says you should listen rather than talk and ask advice. What do you think about this? How do you tell me about this? What do you feel about this type of an approach? What would your idea around this be? And I think it's a better way of getting to work with, people have a different mindset. I'm just working in mental health for so many years. Well, in the city, it's, you know, a different environment, but a lot of the issues are very similar. And I'm not going to argue with patients who's all blown up. I'm not, I want to try and talk that person down, you know, and try and be receptive to what they're talking about. So a lot of it was issues around that that I thought was very helpful for folks, but also recognize, you know, the challenges that we all face. I think we're very fortunate here in American Canyon. I really do. There seems to be a sense of, with most folks, we just look at our council meetings, you know, the sense of what the quorum should be when you're in the public, you know? And I think that's a comment I hear very often from folks, particularly folks that are new here. This is a friendly town. So, yeah, it is. You know, we, look at how diverse we are, how big it's, the composition of it. Look at the good neighborliness that we have all around us on that, you know, people looking out for each other. So I think we're fortunate here, and I was impressed with the league, what they had to offer this year. It was good. That would wrap up the major part of my report. Okay, any future agenda items? Okay. If not, then I thank you all this evening. We have concluded our work for the evening. We are adjourned.
Thank you.